Morning. It is certainly good to be here, it's great to see everyone, we are truly grateful to be a part of this community and just certainly thank you more than this council does and we do not take it for granted for the opportunities each of us have. At this time, I am calling Mr. Ward. I would like to call on Councilwoman Carter to do the invitation and we can stand or remain standing as you will also lead us through the place.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning. Let us pray. O gracious Father, which are in heaven, we bless and praise your holy name right now, Father. We say thank you. Thank you for the amazing power and the amazing work that you have done in our lives. Thank you, Lord, for the goodness and all the blessings, and thank you for your great love and care. Lord, we thank you for your sacrifice and charity so that we may have freedom and life. Forgive us for the times that we don't thank you enough, Father. Thank you for all those who are present here today. We ask that you would bless each in a mighty way. Lord, we thank you for this this great day. We thank you for the sunshine that we have not seen on this day. Renew our spirits, Father, and fill us with peace and joy. Fill us with the love that you have, and Lord, we know in order to love like you, we have to be filled with your love. We love you and we need you, this day and every day. We give you praise and thanks, oh Lord, for you alone is worthy. We thank you for being God all by yourself. And Lord, we pray for these agenda items that they may be for the betterment of every citizen here in Fennick City. Lord, we thank you for this council. We thank you for the leadership that you have placed us in. And Lord, we ask that you will put an angel and a hedge of protection around not only our city, Father, our state and the White House. Father, we come asking these blessings among many, in your holy and precious Jesus Christ's name. Let everyone say that. Salute, glad, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter.
You're welcome.
Proceeding on, council, at this time, I would like to call on Chief Jeff Stans. As I always say, and I will always say, this is a highlight for us and you can't say thank you enough when it's sincere. This council does say that to each of these individuals very sincerely and we certainly appreciate you for what you do, but at this time, I'd like to call on Chief Jeff Stans and our City Manager, Warren.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're here to recognize and give thanks and appreciation to our employees for their services dedication that they put in each and every day serving our citizens and serving our community. We do this in five-year increments, so these are the service anniversaries that we'll be recognizing for the month of February. With our City Clerk's Office, Office Manager Tanya Williams.
Hey, thanks, students.
Speech.
All right, love, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. These five years have gone by. Thank y'all for your support and encouragement. You guys are great.
At least twenty more, thank you. At least twenty more. Twenty. See how fast it lasted? You found it.
With our Police Department, Officer Carson Nicholson, with five years of service.
I just want to thank everybody, especially Director Smith, who originally volunteered to the Police Department and just be sure to support your local police.
And Miss Nicholson, I'm going to say the same thing that I just spoke to Ms. Wayne about, at least twenty more.
I joke with him. We do games that our benefits pay, and he's probably my most competitive employee.
With our Utilities Department, we have our wastewater plant's big lieutenant, Jared Barker, with five years of service.
I just want to say thank you for the city taking their chance on me five years ago. I really enjoyed it down there at the plant and I hope to continue to make you all proud.
Thank you, we all. I'm going to be consistent, so I'm going to tell you the same thing, at least twenty more, at least.
With our Parks Recreation Department, we have Ms. Ruby McGuinness, who runs the Central Activities Center. I've had her for ten years of service.
He said two words with his mic, or? I just want to thank the city for bringing me here to work. I worked a lot of careers before I moved to Fennick City and this is by far been a special award in working with the seniors. The city's a great place to have a career.
Thank you so much. So that means you at least want to do fifteen more.
With our Finance Department, we have our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany Cohen, with fifteen years of service.
We know it really likes to help.
Yeah, this movie ain't suspected. You know, hold it back, man.
I just want to first of all thank God, of course, for keeping me here because, yeah. In all things, give thanks, and so I give thanks to him and I give thanks to him for being so hard enough to help me. That's all of you. I appreciate all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. That's a record. Thank you.
With our Fire Department, we have Captain Daniel Dixon, with twenty years of service.
Just want to say it's been a pleasure working for the community, you know, the city for this long and a little bit longer. So, that's why.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And we have one other in the Fire Department that wasn't able to be here, but we'll make sure we get our thanks to him and get him his certificate and service pen, but Sergeant Melvin Abrer, who also had his twenty years of service.
Well, I know I can't speak on behalf of this entire council, as well as the City Manager. We certainly appreciate you all. Thank you all so much. Without you all, we would not be as successful as the city as we are. We certainly do not take it for granted. And I have some of you all heard me saying the most powerful two words you can say is with new sense sincerely is thank you. And we are saying that collectively. Thank you all for what you all built. Be careful out there and just continue to think of the other people more than we do ourselves, ourselves, because we are in a service position. Thank you all so much and may God continue to bless you all. Thank you. Proceeding on now, council, also on the visitation and population, at this time, I would like to call on this Sandy Davis, for the recognition and proclamation of Arbor Day. At this time, I'd like to call on Mrs. Davis.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Horton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, given us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Fennick City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Eddie Hennelo, Mayor of the City of Fennick City, and on behalf of council, do hereby proclaim this day as Arbor Day. And the City of Fennick City and I urge all cities, citizens, to support efforts to care for our trees and woodland and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. And Jennifer, I know this is a yearly routine, but this is something that we never get tired of doing weekly in the council. Because first of all, we know how much passion you have for it, and so anytime someone has passion for something, it can only make other people have passion in doing things or presenting things. And so that's certainly where we are here today. Again, behalf of the council and myself, we certainly present you with this proclamation and may God continue to keep that passion. Thank you.
So, yeah, I just want to thank y'all again for supporting the Fennick City Tree Board. I want to give a special recognition to all the volunteers that make Arbor Day happen. So we have a group of master gardeners that come out and then tree board volunteers. And then I'd like to introduce Mr. Tony Ware, who is our tree board chairperson that we want to come speak to today.
We just thank you all for the effort and just know that the money that we give with this one can change to make the city beautiful and vibrant.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Ware, people give work. I mean, I sit with one boy and you're my neighbor, wherever on the street. I know you're a people's work.
You won't hear any of that. I promise you that.
I thought this proclamation here would say eighteen seventy-two, all hung out there and it said Arbor Day.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much. Now, council, proceeding on, I'm the City Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask the council on motion for approval of the regular schedule meetings from January sixteenth, work session, as well as January seventeenth, council meetings. Since we were all present, I'd like to ask that we do this in one motion, one vote. So with that made clear, I'd like to call for motion for approval of the work session on the sixteenth, as well as the council meeting on the seventeenth. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Councilwoman Carter, second by Mr. Davis. All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, at this time, I'd like to ask the council on any unfinished business that needs to be discussed. If not, we will proceed on with the resolutions and other administration. We have resolution number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, be ratified in reference to authorizing an additional eleven thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars increase in contract amount, truck equipment sales corporation, for one twenty twenty-three International HB six oh seven SBA truck and grab all equipment from Southland Transportation Group, as a status.
Whereas the City of Fennick City Engineer Department placed a board for one twenty twenty-three International HB six zero seven SBA truck and grab all equipment from Southland Transportation Group for the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents per resolution twenty twenty-one dash two eighty. And whereas the cost for said truck and equipment has increased in an amount of eleven thousand five hundred forty-four dollars, making the new total cost one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, which must be paid to complete the truck and equipment assembly for delivery. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fennick City, Alabama, that an additional eleven thousand five hundred forty-four dollars is hereby approved for truck equipment sales need to complete the truck and equipment order. Pass approved and adopted this twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-four, ratified this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council member heard the reading of the resolution, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify this resolution.
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Davis, and a second, second, Councilman Moore. Any comments or discussion, council?
I guess, Mayor, and I'm pretty good. Angie, you're not the proper citizen, but it took us a long, and that's why they increased.
Yes, sir. I mean, this is a truck that we sent over P.O., we sent with seven thousand five hundred twenty-one to truck equipment sales. This truck is one of our graballs, so it's the truck that goes around and picks up the limbs and debris with the claw fixture. So, we were hoping back in twenty twenty-one that this was just going to go smooth and everything, but based off of COVID restrictions, based off just other general manufacturing issues, it's taken this long. So with these trucks, we have to go through several bits of different vendors. So we buy the actual truck, you know, at truck equipment sales, and then the chassis is stuck at Southland International, and that's who we're waiting on now to actually construct the chassis. And then it's sent over to another person, Peterson Equipment, and they actually put the loader equipment and claw equipment on the chassis and then put the truck and everything together. So it's not one of those things that we can just go and pick up off the yard, but they also did make make sure that we knew that there was some brand new equipment that we could go purchase for an additional seventy thousand dollars. So we felt within telling us that it's going to be here in April or May, that we would rather just go for an additional eleven thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and then get that truck in service and then hopefully we can start making our routes more streamlined.
In the meantime, we have two days service, right?
Yes, sir. In the meantime, we're doing what we need to do. At this point, you'll allow, you know, additional personnel to be on that type of truck to go do additional pickup.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, council, on the administration, this resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen can be ratified in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to make application for grant assistance from Aldott for the resurfacing of Fontaine Road from Six Place South to Brickyard Road. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the City of Fennick City is committed to rehabilitating and improving local transportation infrastructure for its citizens. And whereas the City of Fennick City is committed to addressing critical needs in our transportation system such as safety, connectivity, and economic impact. And whereas evidenced by that commitment, the city wishes to make application to the Alabama Department of Transportation, Aldott, for funding assistance from the Rebuild Alabama Act, RAA, annual grant program for resurfacing of Fontaine Road from Six Place South to Brickyard Road. And whereas the Engineer Department has developed a preliminary scope of work and cost, which is estimated to be five hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. And whereas if the grant application is approved, the project will be funded with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Fennick City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances containing their name, and directs and authorizes the its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information to Aldott as may be required. Pass approved and adopted this twenty-fourth day of January twenty twenty-four, ratified this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution, which council we've all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify. Motion to ratify. I'd like to have a motion to ratify by Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Council having comments on the discussion?
Yes, Mayor, again, we'd like to ask, Mr. Ware, I'm not the appropriate citizen that lived down in here before, it's gotten nervous and called about.
Yes, sir. This is a project that is currently listed in our MPO tip. So things with payment projects, it's just not as easy as the city just says, okay, somebody called, so we need to go pay this road. We have specific criteria that we have to meet depending what type of funding we have, depending how the track account. There's so many different things that we have to base our choices on. We have a payment plan that was done by a consultant that we go back and review. So when we see these additional grants come ahead, and that's when we start looking at, on our list, where these projects are supposed to be, what type of projects on those lists will meet this grant application. So fortunately, Fontaine Road, which was on our tip list for several years down the road, it met the application's needs. So we're trying now, it would be from Six Place South to Brickyard Road, resurface Fontaine Road, which like I said, it's already on the listing list, so this is a grant, so it hasn't been awarded, this was just submitted for the grant. But the total would be five hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. We're requesting three hundred fifty thousand dollar fines for the DOT, and we would have to go back and supplement without about a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. So like I say, it's not something that, you know, we just over there or picking streets. It's all based off statistics, data. I mean, there's a whole bunch of factors that goes into this besides just somebody called, we resurface, right? This has been on the list for quite some time.
Yeah, that's the thing. That's the point I want to get over to the citizen now, you know. What's somebody called, can't just go pay the road, you can't be holding the road, just can't pay the road.
But like you said, it's on the road, even if it's failed, it's on MPO for which year?
I think it's probably about twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's already on the list to be paid. If we accomplish this, it'll be over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Any other comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The council proceeding on on the administration, this is a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen to be ratified in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and submit an SDP grant application with the DECA for the HBAC upgrades to the Sea Club, Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, DECA, is assessing applications for state energy program, SEP, projects that reduce energy consumption in Alabama. And whereas the City of Fennick City owns and operates the Sea Club Gym as a recreation and gathering facility for athletes and citizens. And whereas an application has been generated for the SEP grant to replace the HBAC system in the Sea Club Gym to reduce the energy cost of the city and maximize comfort of citizens utilizing the gym. And whereas the city would be requesting twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars in grant funding and supplying a five percent match, one thousand three hundred and one dollars, to maximize the chance of selection. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Fennick City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and submit the SEP grant application for the HBAC upgrades to the Sea Club Gym. Be it further resolved that the City of Fennick City will provide the one thousand three hundred and one dollars for the grant match on the project. Pass approved and adopted this twenty-fourth day of January twenty twenty-four, ratified this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Thank you again for the question, Mrs. Davis. We heard the resolution, council, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
We have a motion, and that's the second. So we have a motion, Councilwoman Davis, and Councilwoman Carter. Council having comments, questions, or discussions? Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Also, council, on the administration, this is a resolution in reference to examine the dedication of easement for public utilities or administrative subdivision of lots one, two, and ten, block two eighty-one, Titans Mall of Fennick City, lying in section fourteen, township seventeen north, range thirty east, Fennick City, Rosal County, Afonso Smith, the home, Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Fennick City Planning Commission has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to accept the dedication of easement for access to and maintenance of public utilities as dedicated by the Property Boundary Survey for the administrative subdivisions of lots one, two, and ten, block two eighty-one, Titans Mall of Fennick City, lying in section fourteen, township seventeen north, range thirty east, Fennick City, Rosal County, Alabama, date October twentieth, twenty twenty-three, prepared by D. Nathan McBride, registered lands surveyor. And whereas the owner of said property, our funds spent, desires to dedicate the same to the City of Fennick City. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fennick City, Alabama, does hereby accept the dedication of said easement for public utilities as shown on the above referenced administrative subdivision. Pass approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Angie, Mrs. Davis. Council member heard the reading of the resolution, and at this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion. A motion to approve. All right, motion, Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Davis. Council having comments on the discussion? Not, call for a vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes. Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, now the building department. We have a resolution in reference to declare properties a public nuisance and authorizing them to break in the housing and the banking board to take necessary actions to demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from the following properties. Fourteen twenty-four, Tenth Avenue, fifteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, two twenty-eight, Eleventh Avenue, eighteen oh nine, Tenth Court, nineteen oh seven, Tenth Court, nine oh nine, Lander Court, eleven ten, Fourteenth Street, eleven eighteen, Twentieth Street, twelve fifteen, Twentieth Street, thirteen hundred, Twenty-first Street, and eighty eleven, Dillonham Street. And council, if the players of you all will ask a pro to read one of those resolutions, and we will take them all in one motion and one vote. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the City of Fennick City has declared eleven properties located within Fennick City, Alabama, to be a convenience in accordance with Alabama State Law, section eleven dash five three A dash one. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fennick City, Alabama, that the Housing Advancement Board is hereby authorized and authorized to take the necessary action to demolish, remove, and clear all building materials, trash, and debris from each property and to have the lots cleared at the following locations in Fennick City, Alabama. One, fourteen twenty-four, Tenth Avenue, fifteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, two twenty-eight, Eleventh Avenue, eighteen oh nine, Tenth Court, nineteen oh seven, Tenth Court, nine zero nine, Larry Court, eleven ten, Fourteenth Street, eleven eighteen, Twentieth Street, twelve fifteen, Twentieth Street, thirteen hundred, Twenty-first Street, eight eleven, Dillonham Street. Be it further resolved that the cost of demolition by the City of Fennick City, Alabama, shall be assessed against the property taxes. Pass approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Council member heard the master resolution, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Moore. Any comments, questions, or discussions? Not, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes. Thank you. Proceeding on, council on the Engine M Department is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city managers to accept and sign a proposal to enter into a contract with Fifty Twenty Engineering Resource Group Incorporated for the Bridgewater Drive Bridge replacement project. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the bridge over Holland Creek on Bridgewater Drive being the only way in or out for a large number of residences. It is prudent to be proactive and develop a plan to replace the existing old bridge with a structure that could withstand the onslaught of water due to one or both Silver Lake dams failing. And whereas Fifty Twenty Engineering Resource Group Incorporated has submitted a proposal in the amount of one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred dollars to perform all the necessary work to initiate and complete the project excluding any permitting fees and construction costs. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to accept and sign this proposal to enter into a contract with Fifty Twenty Engineering Resource Group Incorporated to perform said necessary work for the stated amounts. Passed approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you again for the reading of the resolution, Mrs. Davis, and council we've all heard and read. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion. Councilwoman Carter may have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Any comments, discussion? All right. Not any, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes. Thank you. Proceeding on, council on the Finance Department is a resolution in reference to authorize a refund paid in the full amount of six hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents and final satisfaction of the sales and use tax included interest made to the subject of Russell County Community Hospital LLC doing business as Jack Houston Memorial Hospital versus Russell County, Alabama, Lee County, Alabama, and Fanning City, Alabama, in the Alabama Tax Tribunal Case Number County-City twenty-one dash one twenty-four dash LP. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Russell County Community Hospital LLC doing business as Jack Houston Memorial Hospital paid certain sales and use taxes to the City of Fanning City between August twenty fifteen and November twenty nineteen. And whereas the Russell County Community Hospital LLC petitioned the City of Fanning City for a refund of sales and use tax paid to the city between August twenty fifteen and twenty nineteen in the amount of one billion, five hundred, seven thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one billion, five hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the City of Fanning City denied said petition. And whereas the Russell County Community Hospital LLC appealed the city's denial of its petition for the refund of one million, five hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents and sales and use tax paid to the City of Fanning City to the Alabama Tax Tribunal in case number County slash City twenty-one dash two fourteen dash LP. And whereas the Alabama Tax Tribunal determined that the Russell County Community Hospital was due a refund of a portion of the sales and use tax it paid to the City of Fanning City between August twenty fifteen and November twenty nineteen in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, nine hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. And whereas it has been determined that the total refund owed to the Russell County Community Hospital LLC including interest is six hundred, four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize a refund payment in the amount of six hundred, four thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and forty-five cents in full and final satisfaction of the sales and use tax including interest made to the subject of Russell County Community Hospital LLC doing business as Jack Houston Memorial Hospital versus Russell County, Alabama, Lee County, Alabama, and Fanning City, Alabama, in the Alabama Tax Tribunal Case Number County slash City twenty-one dash one twenty-four dash LP. Passed approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Daye may have a second. Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Any comments or discussion?
Uh, yes, Mayor, and, uh, could we get someone laparicized by the substance of Fanning City, Alabama?
Morning, Captain.
Morning.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is a case, uh, regarding the refund of certain sales and use taxes paid by Jack Houston Community Hospital, um, and some of its vendors for durable medical equipment. Uh, they petitioned the city through Time Avenue, which is the company that, that managed our, um, sales and use tax, uh, and so they petitioned the city for a one point five eighty dollar, uh, refund. The city denied that based on, um, well, one was the statute of limitations, and two was, was an argument about whether or not, uh, the hospital was entitled to the exemption. Um, the hospital appealed to the Alabama Tax Tribunal, the case was litigated and argued in the tribunal, and the tribunal determined that, uh, the city, uh, was due a refund of five hundred and fourteen thousand, um, about a third of, of the amount that was petitioned for, and also where the interest, uh, be paid. Also part of the lawsuit, uh, where the appeal was a claim against the Russell County Commission and also the Lee County Commission. The claim against Lee County was dismissed, um, and Lee County was, was found, um, to be liable for a refund, uh, to Jack Houston, and they were a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So this is money that the city collected, um, set aside, and the hospital did this portion of the refund.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ange. Appreciate it. Any comments or discussion? All right, at this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council on the Fire Department is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce tuition reimbursement with Chatham Valley Community College for emergency medical technician training in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the City of Fanning City, Alabama, and Fanning City Fire Rescue has applied for and then awarded a grant for the Alabama Department of Commerce for funding. And whereas the City of Fanning City and Fanning City Fire Rescue wishes to enter into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce in order to obtain funds for tuition reimbursement with Chatham Valley Community College for emergency medical technician training. The total funds awarded are up to eighteen thousand dollars. The City of Fanning City will be required to pay the initial funds for the tuition with one hundred percent of the funds being reimbursed by the Alabama Department of Commerce. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager as authorized officials to sign the necessary documents for the agreement with the Alabama Department of Commerce. Passed approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilwoman Daye, and that's not asking, Councilwoman Gordon. We have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have the motion, and that's not asking, council, any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes. Now, on the Police Department, council, is a resolution in reference to accepting a bid and authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with BND Gordon Construction Company for the construction of a property and evidence storage warehouse. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the Fanning City Police Department requires adequate storage facilities to safely and securely process and store property and evidence. And whereas the City of Fanning City, Alabama, has needed necessary to construct a property and evidence storage warehouse to be utilized by the Police Department. And whereas the City of Fanning City has solicited seal bids for the construction of a property and evidence warehouse as required under the Alabama Bid Law. And whereas BND Gordon Construction Company, Inc., submitted a bid for six hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is within the estimated cost for the project. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Fanning City, Alabama, does hereby accept the low bid of six hundred and eight thousand dollars for the construction of a property and evidence storage warehouse, and does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement for said work. Passed approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you so much for the reading of the resolution, council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Gordon. They have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Council, are there any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council also on the Police Department is a resolution in reference to purchase of two twenty twenty-four Dodge Ram Big Horn fifteen crew cab four by four vehicles purchased under state contract T one nine one L from Stivers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, Prattville, Alabama, in the total amount of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and six cents. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas under the Alabama Bid Law for public contracts, when it's a penalty, can purchase property under a state bid, provided that the state bid so provides. And whereas the City of Fanning City desires to purchase the property herein acted, described on said state bids for the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Fanning City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract T one nine one L from Stivers Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, Prattville, Alabama. Two twenty twenty-four Dodge Ram Big Horn fifteen hundred crew cab four by four vehicles. White and color had a cost of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and three cents per vehicle, for a total cost of ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and six cents. Passed approved and adopted this sixth day of February twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you again for the reading of the resolution, and council, we've heard it. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Gordon may have a second.
Second.
Second, by Councilwoman Gordon. Comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council on the ordinance, we have a public hearing, second reading. It's an ordinance to rezone one point one two acres of land located at fifty-two of three Sunday Road from R one zone, low density residential district to C three zone, neighborhood commercial district. Edward E. Cook Jr., Rodney E. Cook, Jeffrey W. Cook, and Tina Marie Ross only. The first reading, council, was on the nineteenth of December. I'm not going to ask the clerk to re-read, but at this time, I would like to declare this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to come and invest in council, in the matter of this rezoning, now's the time to do so. Okay? Since we do not have anyone coming forward, I am now closing this public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please.
Motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Gordon may have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Okay, comments or discussion?
If I can, just real quick, sir, man. That's a real touchy area up there on Summerville Road, both sides, down towards Pigga Wiggly and up towards Buckland and Long Grange and all. There's a lot of people who's got their whole investment on Summerville Road, living on that, on that street. And some of them can afford to move from other places, if prosperity can move next door to them, because it's used, some of them can't, but a lot of them are old people. I know these, they stand very, very, very well, everything, and I still believe that it's just not the right time or the right place for this to go forward with being rezoned. And as we stated in here yesterday, I really wish we had not changed the walk across the street at that time. But that was, but it was done for a different reason and, and, and a different time, and it does border other commercial area. This is proximity to commercial area, but there still is a street between this and the commercial property, and it buffers all the trees and everything. So this still looks like more like residential than it does commercial. And if you had a commercial business sitting on this piece of property, it would look like it was stuck right in the middle of residential. And just the appearance would be wrong, I think the timing would be wrong, I think there will be a time that it will happen, I think there will come a time that it, uh, should happen. But I just do believe at this, at this moment, it's just not the right, right on the fork for the right reasons, and, uh, like I said, good friends with the whole family, and, but I agree with the rest of this council that, uh, you know, it just shouldn't happen, uh, is what I'm thinking, the way it's been discussed. But I just wanted everybody to know kind of what I said.
And I, I, Councilwoman Bailey, he, he described it well, I just want to say that I, I agree with, like, everything that he, that he just explained. Okay? Thank you all. Thank you, Councilwoman Gordon, Councilwoman Bailey. And other comments or discussion? Not at this time, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council, proceeding on on the ordinance, is an ordinance to rezone two point three one acres of land located at eighteen oh one, Nose Road from C four zone, Highway Commercial District, to R three zone, high density residential district, with Peterson Home. The first reading, council, was also on December nineteenth of last year, twenty twenty-three. I am not going to ask the clerk to re-read, however, at this time, I am declaring this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would like to step forward in this matter and this rezoning, uh, to discuss with the council, now's the time to do so. Okay? No one has stepped forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed, and at this time, uh, Mrs. Davis? Yeah, we may have a motion, please, thank you.
Maybe it's more to the time.
Motion to deny.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Bailey, and I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Comments, questions, discussion? Not, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes. Next, council on the board appointments, it's the zoning and adjustment and peers board. Uh, we have two opening, one of the person has been contacted, and so at this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion to reappoint, uh, Mr. Rudolph Martin, who will go as the first alternate on these zoning and adjustment and peers board. We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Rudolph Martin, please.
Motion to reappoint.
Yes, motion to reappoint Mr. Martin.
Okay. Have a motion, may I have a second, second? We have the motion, we have a second, like, Councilman Gordon. We have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's time I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Loeb?
Yes. And the other opening, uh, council, which we did, uh, there's some of the buildings that's on it, and it's time I'd like to ask for a motion to nominate, uh, to nominate Mr. Nancy Jones.
Make a motion to nominate Mr. Nancy Jones.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilwoman Bailey may have a second.
Second.
Second, uh, Councilwoman Gordon, okay? Call for the vote, Mrs. Davis? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, Council, now another license application. These are all first reading, and I would like to declare that if I mispronounced this name, please forgive me, but I got some capital here.
Yeah. Where'd that F from?
Test log.
I know. I didn't want to.
The first reading is an application for an off-premises beer license submitted by Menadre Mariah, but, uh, Menadre Mariah for Corner Store One Incorporated. The business as Corner Store One located at thirty-eight fourteen over Lica Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the Police Department that reads as follows. Reference Menadre Mariah, Corner Store One, Inc., doing business as Corner Store One, thirty-eight fourteen over Lica Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. I have reviewed the application for off-premises beer, and I have no objection to the issuance of the license to the applicant based upon, based upon his criminal background investigation. I also have a letter from the Fire Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to applications submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store One, Inc., doing business as Corner Store One, located at thirty-eight fourteen over Lica Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. This applicant has applied for an off-premises beer license. This address is not located within Phoenix City Fire jurisdiction. I also have a letter from the Building Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store One, Inc., doing business as Corner Store One, located at thirty-eight fourteen over Lica Road, for an off-premises beer license. This facility was inspected on January nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading, and at this time I'd like to ask for a motion based on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilwoman Bailey, may I have a second? Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote.
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Also, Council, on the first reading, license application for an off-premises beer license submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Two Incorporated. The business as Corner Store Two located at thirty-nine thirty U.S. Highway eighty west, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the Police Department that reads as follows. Menadre Mariah, Corner Store Two, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Two, thirty-nine thirty U.S. Highway eighty west, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. I have reviewed the application for off-premises beer, and I have no objection to the issuance of the license to the applicant based upon his criminal background investigation. Letter from the Fire Department reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Two, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Two, located at thirty-nine thirty Highway eighty west, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. This applicant has applied for an off-premises beer license. This address is not located within Phoenix City Fire jurisdiction. I have a letter from the Building Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Two, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Two, located at thirty-nine thirty U.S. Highway eighty west, for an off-premises beer license. This facility was inspected on January nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license. That's the three letters, sir.
Council, we've all heard the first reading, and at this time I'd like to ask for a motion based on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Carter. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Okay. I call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, Council, on the first reading, license application, is application for off-premises beer license submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Three Incorporated. The business as Corner Store Three located at thirty-seven seventeen Highway four third of South, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the Police Department that reads as follows. Reference Menadre Mariah, Corner Store Three, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Three, thirty-seven seventeen Highway four thirty-one south, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. I have reviewed the application for off-premises beer, and I have no objection to the issuance of the license to the applicant based upon his criminal background investigation. Letter from the Building Department reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Three, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Three, located at thirty-seven seventeen Highway four thirty-one south, for an off-premises beer license. This facility was inspected on January nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license. Letter from the Fire Department reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Three, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Three, located at thirty-seven seventeen Highway four thirty-one south, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. This applicant has applied for an off-premises beer license. The address is not located within Phoenix City Fire Rescues jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading. At this time I'd like to ask for a motion based on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, Council, on the first reading, is an application for an off-premises beer license, off-premises wine license submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Four Incorporated, doing business as Corner Store Four located at one twenty-eight Highway one sixty-five, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter from the Police Department that reads as follows. Menadre Mariah, Corner Store Four, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Four, one twenty-eight Alabama Highway one sixty-five, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. I have reviewed the applications for off-premises beer, off-premises wine, and I have no objection to the issuance of the licenses to the applicant based upon his criminal background investigation. I have a letter from the Fire Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Four, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Four, located at one twenty-eight Alabama Highway one sixty-five, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. This applicant has applied for an off-premises beer and off-premises wine licenses. The address is not located within Phoenix City Fire jurisdiction. I also have a letter from the Building Department that reads as follows. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Menadre Mariah for Corner Store Four, Inc., doing business as Corner Store Four, located at one twenty-eight Alabama Highway one sixty-five, for an off-premises beer and off-premises wine licenses. This facility was inspected on January nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the first reading. At this time I'd like to ask for a motion to approve first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Bailey. May I have a second? Second, Councilwoman Gordon. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and at this time I'd call for the vote. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Dave?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Davis. Thank you, Council, so much. If we don't have anything, so, you know, it's always a good thing. At this time, Council, I'd like to ask if there's anything, and if the Council likes to add or take away, please.
Mayor, let me just take a moment to totally just say congratulations to those employees for their years of service. Less than ten employees was recognized this morning, totaling possibly eighty years of service. And that's a great thing. So it just states that Phoenix City, the city of Phoenix City is a great place to worship. Excuse me. Worship, worship, play, and work.
That's a motion.
Yeah. Right. Worship, play, and work. But, well, within the city of Phoenix City. So congratulations to those employees for their dedication and commitment to make our city one of the best places to live, worship, and play. That's what I wanted to really say. And month of February, we share Valentine Day alone with, has been set aside to give contributions to those African Americans that have made great marks within the United States. So Black History Month observance, I believe there will be a breakfast that's coming up this month at the, in Columbus, at the Trade Center. So if you get a chance, go down and support that Black History Breakfast. And also, right here in Phoenix City, our Parks and Rec continue to do a great job acknowledging and supporting Black History Month as well. And so that is going to take place on the twenty-second of this month, right here at the Central Activities Center. So if you get a chance, stop by and support those efforts. Again, Parks and Rec continues to do a great job on making sure we got something to do within our city. And so we want to support what they have set aside for us to do. So with that being said, once again, a lot probably is going on for this month. So let's celebrate Black History because it is part of American history.
Nothing else?
I'm going to pretend, just real quick comment. Twenty-five men and women around the world in armed services, we lost three service members in Fort Moore about a week ago. They were over there serving their country, probably did not think they were in harm's way, but found out they weren't in harm's way for people that want to harm us because we're Americans. Living in a country that's free, they're living in the best country in the world. Other people are jealous of that and they'll take it away from us, but thank goodness we got people right here at home that protect us, right here in our own state that protect us, our own nation. But thank goodness we have a group of young men and women that protect our country all over this world, keep our parentage free, keep us free, and just pray for the families of those, the young men and young women that their lives are taken from their families. You can only imagine hardship that goes with something like that, getting a phone call of that nature. But I will say this, they knew the danger when they joined the armed services, just the desire, men and women that put these uniforms on and now own the city know the danger of it. But they still choose to stand up front and do that to protect us. And for that, they should always be appreciated, never overlooked, but they can't be thanked enough.
Okay.
Well, I'm not going to say anything, but I just want to refer with my group of county members already stated, and you know, as I listen to the news and go about what we need to do, Mary is more love and hearts. And one of the main things is treat folks the way you wish to be treated, you know, treat folks right. That goes along with, you know, I know we have a different attitude, we have different opinion, but there's love, there's compassion toward ourselves, man. That's what I have.
Mr. Hahn?
Just want to say one thing that has a lot to do with us. This morning, we read several resolutions attached to this other grants, a lot of things, not only on our federal level, but our state level, and then looking at news this morning, our government, provincial, state bodies, no matter what you're Republican, Democrat, Independent, whoever you want to call yourself, it has helped us a lot in Phoenix City. So we want to pray that they can come together and have a solid budget for the state of Alabama. And like you always say, you gotta take care of home, baby. So I'm praying for that, and hope you all will, so we can continue, because I heard one of the legislative states were a hundred years just about over, because they had a lot to do, but they did it, as far as taking care of citizens of Alabama. So we want to pray that they have a great budget session and that we can continue to do things and receive the gifts that we have to be able to take care of our citizens in this city. I'm telling you, a lot of this stuff, it's, I can't even remember what I already said, but we have done everything we've been doing here in this city now, and the way this city is looking has been by going back to the basics and starting from there to do things. You know, we get a cloud over us with a lot of other stuff that's in a brother, what we should be doing, that's a problem. But when we stick to what we are supposed to be doing, we have been very successful. And there's nobody, nobody that can go against that.
Uh, the mayor, uh, this, Mr. Hahn, after that, where I go, I get in those conversation right, Mr. Timon, I said, one thing about Phoenix City, we stand, share with Brady for those rent, that's a great thing.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all. I do want to say this is, we want our city to be exalted and to wait, to wait for it and they said it to be exalted, and as I stated, nineteen years ago, the state of the city is a hundred years old, and we look forward to preparing and doing the foundation for the next hundred years. But we want our city to be exalted and to wait for it to really be exalted, instead we gotta have righteous people who want to stand up for what's right, regardless of what ethnicity, regardless of what side of railroad track you own, with, regardless of what your affiliation is with the Republican or Democratic or Independent, at the end of the day, it takes righteous people to exalt the city as well as the nation. So I do want to say that, and I do want to say this year, as you will continue to hear me say, is that's, that's your more intimate for each other.